June 25, 2025, a special meeting of the Malibu City Council is now called to order. Public comment will be limited to items on the agenda. If you would like to speak, please submit your request to speak form to the clerk. May we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Conrad?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember Yuri?
Here.
Mayor Procham Silverstein?
Yo.
Mayor Riggins?
Here.
You have four.
May we please have a report on the postman of the agenda? Oh, I'm sorry, Pledge of Allegiance. Could you lay this in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Okay. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we please have a report on the postman of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on June 23, 2025.
May we please have an approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
You guys fight it out who's the first, sorry.
I first.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Ordered? Okay. So, we will start with public comment and the clerk will announce his...
Yes, we have one speaker and Kay.
Hi. I sent everyone an email that would help facilitate the public participation by doing the pool video and audio, which would be 100% funded by somebody other than the city. The other thing too is the agenda is not posted outside of this room, which is required by the roundtable. Thank you. So technically, you can't really meet?
Trevor.
Trevor, Kelsey.
The agenda is required to be posted at the meeting location and available for the full required posting time. We posted it in our board outside, which is available for the public to review 24/7. Notices of adjournment are required to be posted on the doors of the meeting room, but one was not required for this meeting.
Thank you very much.
So the location of the meeting is this building, right?
Yes.
Okay, we are going to turn to our facilitator? Is this correct?
I'm ready to roll, Madam Mayor. Ready to roll.
Okay.
All right.
Lay this off.
It's good to be back with you. I have nothing but good memories of this room and the time I spent with you. And that includes Halen, who was in the audience the last time we met together, right? So it's a good memory, good association. And I have enjoyed building a relationship with the city of Malibu, all with the ultimate goal of serving the residents, businesses, stakeholders, and everybody here, which is what your role is as elected officials, right? To really govern, to lead, as we talked about the last time that we were together. We're not going to cover the same stuff we talked about last time. You know, contexts have changed. You've had some major issues that have impacted, is it more than half your city or about half your city, with the major disasters that have happened? A lot of context changes. And you know, back in, when was it, 2008, Joseph Nye from the Kennedy School of Government, he's a Harvard guy at the Kennedy School there who goes in and out of the White House in his younger years, depending on who was in office, right? As a consultant or assuming a role of some kind, Joseph Nye. He wrote a book called The Powers to Lead, plural, The Powers to Lead. And his basic context is this. When it comes to being a leader, there are three elements that are really important. There are, when it comes for any one of us, it can change, right? There are leaders, there are followers, and there is context, right? And when it comes to the latter, it can change everything. One of the examples he gives, right? Because with different contexts, different leaders emerge. And you've probably seen that with all that's gone on here in the city of Malibu. And what I mean by that is his example is Rudy Giuliani. He says, you know, Rudy Giuliani was a well thought of mayor in the city of New York. He addressed a number of things that were pleasing to New Yorkers, but you know, he wasn't really viewed as, even though it's a major city, a candidate for president. And then September 11th, 9/11 hits, right? September 11, 2001, what we call 9/11. And all of a sudden, the context changed. Something of a first instance happened for many of us in our lifetimes, right? An attack on American soil, if you will. And I remember, I was on my way to court that day and I'm watching these towers burning on our broadcast there. And I'm wondering, is there even going to be court today or what's happening? Turns out, I got to court, it was shut down. And so I just went back home, spent that day watching the broadcast of all of this. And about 36 hours later, right? In a nice blue shirt like Doug right there, sleeves rolled up, looking a bit disheveled, Mayor Giuliani grabbed that podium and he says, "We New Yorkers are resilient. We Americans are courageous. We will not let the cowardly acts of a few," blah, 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 blah. And the context had changed. And I remember watching him and thinking, oh man, this has made me feel better, right? A leader who emerges from that context. Winston Churchill basically did the same thing on a larger scale in World War II. And he became the Winston Churchill we all quote now. Always a well thought of aristocratic family and MP, but nothing like he became with the threat of the access power. So when the context changes, different leaders emerge based on the needs of the organization, based on the needs of that context. And you have certainly experienced that, right? As all these major changes have impacted so many. And we've needed to pivot our priorities, which we'll talk more about tomorrow as we facilitate that discussion. But for our purposes here today, just understand, followers can usurp a great deal of power by resisting a leader. Power they don't have, they can gain, they can embrace and harness and hijack, if you will, by refusing to follow and doing a number of other things. We need to ensure that in the context that the city of Malibu finds itself right now, that we are ready, willing, and able to do those things and to work with our executive leadership team in a way that makes the most sense for all those that we serve and all those impacted by what you do. And that's part of what this is, aligning our paradigms. But it goes further than that. It also addresses, right? What we need to do to ensure we are operating at the highest level of providing other protection. For example, in your membership, in California, Joint Powers Insurance Authority, sometimes known as CalJPIA or the JPIA. And for those who are less knowledgeable, right? We need to know, we've been using JPAs since the late 70s when we had the insurance crisis, right? And that insurance crisis, everybody was insuring everything. All these cities were being insured and the insurance companies got such an interest return on the money they were collecting, they weren't doing their due diligence and going out and inspecting whether Malibu had trip and fall hazards, whether there was a tree potential hazard somewhere that could wreak havoc or cause injury or create other exposures. They weren't doing their due diligence because they all felt, hey, no matter what happens, the insurance companies, we're going to be able to cover it because we're making all this money, right? And then boom, the economy changed. And all of a sudden, cities like Malibu, who were paying $50,000 a year for general liability coverage, right? On for their insurance or whatever the number would be, all of a sudden, that number increased to $250,000 in one fiscal year. And no, cities weren't ready for that. So in that crisis moment, the state legislature and a few brain trust people up in Sacramento who knew this stuff, they got together and said, hey, let's pass some legislation that will allow us to create joint powers authorities. And these JPAs afforded us the opportunity as a city of Malibu, as a city of Santa Monica, as a city of Calabasas or Agoura Hills, to come together and act like a big city. LA could self insure, so could San Diego, Oakland, San Francisco, Sacramento, all big enough to set aside a certain amount of reserve based on what the actuaries told them was how much we needed to reserve for general liability, how much we needed to reserve for workers' comp, how much we needed to reserve for property, right? And that kind of thing. But we could not, Malibu was not built for that, and most communities are not. So with the JPAs that were born in the late 70s, it gave us the opportunity to come together and act like a self insured big city, right? So we don't have commercial insurance. And quite frankly, the insurance companies aren't really interested in coming back to the world of public entities because no matter how small you are, you're seen as a deep pocket, right? Because you're backed by the almighty tax dollars. So that being said, the whole paradigm shifted then. And some municipalities resisted because they wanted their autonomy. And they didn't want to have to answer to a greater good, if you will. And they weren't very good members of joint powers authorities, right? Because they wanted to know, hey, what's, how's this going to impact us? And so forth. And so it was difficult, a difficult learning curve in the 80s, even into the 90s. But eventually, everybody understood. If we want a viable, sustainable city of Malibu, right? And that we are covered, the cupboard isn't bare for coverage when these catastrophic events occur or whatever else, then we need to be a team player. And we have to look at the greater good. And that's what those boards do. And so yours, CalJPIA, has a big board, right? All the members are represented on that board. And who is Malibu's representative on JPIA's board? Mary Ann? Okay. And so Mary Ann has to do this. She has to take turns wearing her Mayor of Malibu hat, right? And then take it off at times when we're talking about, should we settle this case with the city of Lomita, you know, this fire engine ran into this or that? I'm totally making that up, right? Where the fire engine ran into so and so, Mary Ann has to put on her JPA hat and say, hmm, you know, it would be better to settle, even though the city doesn't want to, because they feel like there's some holes in this case, et cetera. Overall, this is a nice controlled settlement versus, you know, what could happen. And Lomita may vote against providing authority to settle the case, but most of the other members vote for it. And that's the world you live in, right? Changing heads. And whoever's on that board, you're going to need to do that, yes.
Is that an advisory position then? Like, are we, are you advising the...
No, no, she has an actual vote.
Oh, wow.
On it, yeah. So, I mean, I'm not sure how all of JPIA works.
Yeah, I'm not that high up.
Okay.
Depending on those things. Just general mentorship.
Yeah, so the JPA, CalJPIA has a staff. And because they're full time staff, they too are public entity employees, right? So they can have per's retirement, et cetera. They ultimately guide, they create the staff reports, they have to comply with the Brown Act. They create the staff reports. And for closed session, they will produce reports on cases that they're seeking settlement authority for. Because they can't just decide that on their own. They can only do that up to a certain level, right? The litigation manager over there and the liability people like Paul Zeglovich and others, they have certain authority that the board of JPIA has given them. You can settle cases on your own up to 50,000, right? Or, I don't know, I'm making up that number as well. But when it comes to anything in excess of that, it has to get board approval, right? And that's what happens. So there's a group, either an executive committee or a full board. It's more likely the executive committee of JPA, which consists of folks like you. And they decide to give authority or not to settle or to continue to litigate those cases.
Interesting.
So that's the world we've been in now for some time, right? And you've met with them. You've met with them recently and had a meeting to discuss the status of things. And we're not going to talk about that here. But all of this is designed to align our paradigms, to do what's in the best interest of Malibu. And a lot of times, that is aligned with how we can meet the expectations of those folks at our JPA, right? And you all know that, right? From discussions you've had with others. But more importantly, in the day to day operation, having nothing to do or less to do with the JPA, how are we effectively governing this city, right? And knowing each of you, having met with each of you recently, I would say overall, where I see vast improvement is in your engagement with one another, right? I wasn't here a couple of years ago when things were a little more conflict oriented, dare I say, a little hostile.
Contentious.
Contentious, contentious with the city council meetings and the governance team. I don't believe with the steps you've taken, like you've created your Code of Conduct, right? For governance team members, is that the name of it, Bruce? What did you call it? Code of Conduct?
Yeah, it's called Code of Conduct.
Yeah, yeah. And they worked on it and it was you two, Doug and Bruce, right? And you came up with a nice one. And I've seen many, I've read many of those and it's nice. Personally, I would want a little bit more in there, but that's just an opinion. That's one man's paradigm talking, you know? And I think it's where we would disagree, Bruce. I would want a little more declaratory stuff in there than you two ultimately came to. So let's press forward with this and talk about it. Just a quick refresher on one slide. This is what we covered when we met last November, right? Or October, whenever it was. We talked about basically the four pillars of what you do as a governance team. And Halen, since then, you've been to the League of California Cities New Council Member Orientation, things like that, so I'm sure they drilled down even further. But your priority, set the vision for this city. How can we expect directors, the managers under them, et cetera? And most importantly, our primary boots on the ground, which is Candace right now and Richard, to know how to prioritize, how to allocate resources, et cetera, if we don't have a clear vision for what we want to be, who we want to be, and how we want to be, and et cetera. So how does a director in an ideal city set their objectives for the next year, three years, five years? It's based on the vision of this team right here, right? We talked about that and it remains true. You have to then adopt the policies and procedures that will build a structure within which we will operate to achieve that vision. And so with those policies and procedures, that whole framework, you allow us to move freely within those parameters to successfully discharge their duties and responsibilities. Now, at some point, we're going to be adopting more framework as AI is rushing, continues to rush onto the scene. We're going to have to be asked to address a few things when it comes to artificial intelligence, right? That's coming up for many cities, right? And that is the case. And policies are state related to it unless you already have them. Then you go out in the world, right? This is, you're an elected person, you're out in the world and Steve's out there shaking hands and letting people know, hey, here's what we're doing, right? Our priority right now is to establish policies that will make it as streamlined and pass resistance for people seeking to rebuild, et cetera. And he's letting people know that, right, out there. As is Mary Ann as our mayor. And Bruce is our vice mayor and the rest of our council members. We're out there in the community promoting, right? Promoting what we are doing for Malibu, with Malibu, and for the long term sustainability of Malibu. And then, right, this is a big one. We get all those things there, but great, we have to attract and retain an executive, a city manager, right? To be your workhorse, if you will. To be the leader and guide of all these incredibly talented directors and then they, their managers, and then the rest of the employees beneath that. And so this is a big one, right? It's a big one. And over the years, I only know your history back to Riva, right? But Riva and then Steve, and then interim now with Candace. That's the scope of my history for the record, right, on you. But this one's critical because you need to vet and make sure that this person understands your expectations, right? What they can expect, no surprises, right? When it comes right down to it, of what it's going to be like to be the shepherd of the vision, if you will, right? When they come here and work for the city of Malibu. And I'm confident you'll be able to find that person, right? I'm confident you'll be able to do that because even though you're a small town, by many standards, you are the city of Malibu, right? And that comes with a certain cachet, reputation, et cetera. Now, I will say, not all that reputation is great for people in the industry who work in the city manager world. I understand you've got a lot of applications and I think I was talking to Bruce about that. You know, it's a combination of things, right? Malibu is a lovely place to work. It's a little remote, makes it challenging for some people to want to come to work here. But also, there are a lot of city administrators out of work. So, you know, you're going to get applications. I don't want you to be lulled into a false sense of security that all is well because we got 50 people applying. That's not necessarily the case, just so we're clear about that.
No, but it's an indication that we're going to come in.
Oh, yeah.
I missed it. If we have three applications, that's a difference, you know? So there is some benefit to what we, the number of people that apply. There's a message there.
The message is that people are looking for opportunities as a city manager. They are, right? And you have one open. So, you know, here's your opportunity to decide of those 50, who will be the best fit. I know you've got good people working for you right now in interim roles. And there's no reason you can't find somebody who is going to effectively be able to embrace your vision and enhance it. And, dare I say, every great city manager I know pushes back a little bit, like, well, honestly, Halen, I'm not sure this is something that fits in the priorities of the governance team as a whole. So can we table this, set it up for discussion? No, you want somebody who's going to push back and not just be a rubber stamp individual, right? You want somebody who's going to say, hey, we're treading down a path, Steve, that isn't okay because of X, Y, or Z, et cetera. So any other comments on this component? Just a quick reminder, refresher, if you will? Good, okay. So what it comes down to then, what we talked about, this is the last repeat slide from the last time. There's only two. The reason we went through all that stuff is because we want to keep you safe. You have certain immunities in the government code that afford you the opportunity to not be liable for certain behaviors if you stay within the scope of your governance team role. When you go rogue or maverick, start engaging in things outside of that, and Trevor would be the authority on this, then it could be problematic, right? When it comes to it. And based on what I, what I discussed with each of you and your thoughts, and I don't know if I thank you, but I really do thank you for making time for me. We seem to be doing loads better on the not directing the work of people, but I don't know that we are self aware enough as individuals or as a collective about how our behaviors are impacting our employees, resident company included, right? We may not be totally aware on how our non-directing the work, but still engaged, is impacting our team and having the adverse impact of being burdensome, right? And that's the challenge. And we'll talk about that here in a second. But that was the reason we covered a lot of that. Here's your role. We want you to stay there so you're safe and you don't open yourself up to personal liability in any way. Anything to add to that, my lawyer friend, Bruce?
Nope.
Good shape, all right. Let's do a little exercise, if you would, with me, all right? Because I want to talk about your paradigm because it has everything to do with what we're doing here in Malibu, everything.
I think I did have a question.
Yes, please.
Can you go back to the last slide? So council gives direction, then monitors the execution and implementation. Is that what? Is that correct?
Yeah.
So I think I would need more, I guess, the monitors, like, to stay in lane, right? When we give the direction, but then monitors without being overburdened. I think is what I would probably struggle with.
Perfect, perfect comment, observation, and we will be addressing that.
Okay, thank you.
We will be addressing that. So thanks, Halen, for that. All right, a little exercise. I'm going to do this with, right now, each one of you is going to give me an answer to what you see. We're going to do a little Rorschach right here, right? I'm trying to, you know, vet who the sociopath is on this council. So we're going to start with Doug. We're going to start with Doug. Number one, whatever your impression is when you see this image, Bruce, don't be influenced by his powerful suggestive influence, all right? You keep your original thought. Same, Mary Ann, same, Halen, same, Steve. Keep your original thought. Now, yours may be the same as Doug's. But if it's your original thought, just make sure you share that. Are you ready? No pressure, Doug, you ready?
I just want you to know, I've done this before, I wore his ancient hot dog.
I like hot dogs too. All right, Doug, what is this?
A flower.
Very good. Bruce?
It's part of the skeletal system.
Very good. Mary Ann?
Yeah, skeletal system. I saw skeletal system.
Yeah, some version of that, yes.
I was going to say a pelvis.
Some anatomical thing? Pelvis?
I was thinking of female, like, or a pelvis.
I was going to go there too, but I actually...
I was going to go there.
Sorry.
We may have, Kelsey, we may have to schedule a sexual harassment.
They're taking their training.
Okay, good. So those are all great answers. And some people are cautious and don't say pelvis, but a lot of people see pelvis on this one, right? My favorite answer to this one is Eiffel Tower. Do you see that vision up there? I love that. I think my brain's always on vacation and that's why I love that, right? It's always on vacation. The most common answer to this Rorschach ink blot, and you'll see it real quick, is crabs.
They're on the sides.
Yeah, 10 o'clock and 2 o'clock. Blue crabs, right there, right there.
I thought the exercise could put it all together in a cohesive answer, though, not multiple things.
Yeah, I didn't think we were partially...
I'll just give you that one.
I was going to say, is there an east coast bend to that and a west coast bend to that?
Bend took it.
Very good, very good question, Mary Ann. All right, let's start with Steve this time and we'll work our way back. We're only going to do three of these, but we're illustrating a point here. Are you ready, Steve?
Excellent.
Here it comes. What is that?
Sand.
Halen?
I see a moth.
They went bat or moth initially.
Bat.
All right, the most common answer to this one, bat or moth, right? So very good, very good. You fit right in on what most people perceive. Now, I love it when people...
We're average.
When people see a butterfly, and just a couple days ago, somebody said butterfly to me on Monday, a large group I was with, and I love it when people say butterfly. Because that's the ugliest butterfly I have ever seen, right? If you turned it upside down, I could see that a little bit more. But when somebody sees a butterfly out of that, I'm thinking, you know, this person I need to make a note of, right? Say Candace is the one who saw the butterfly. If I'm ever feeling down or a little bit, you know, a low level of energy or I need my spirits lifted, I'm going to go find Candace and go to lunch with her. Because anybody who can see a butterfly out of that ugly thing is somebody who's going to lift my spirits, right? That's how I analyze this in my...
They may have a really tough life and that's the best they can get out of it.
Yeah, it's true, it's true. All right, let's do the last one. We'll start in the middle. Mary Ann, go over to Doug, Steve, and your last, Halen. All right, here we go. What is this, Mary Ann?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, I see, like, lions on the side.
Thank you.
Yeah, I saw two leopards or lions on the sides, but the rest of it, who knows? Mountain in the middle.
Okay.
Face mask.
Face mask, very good.
Two red, Tony, mountain.
Two reds.
I'm impressed. I saw a big sailboat with sail and then two leopards or animals on the sides, which were part of the boat.
I like that.
Yeah, thanks.
My favorite answer to this is cruise ship, right? Either pulling away or pulling in. Again, brain's always on vacation, right, my brain? Most common answer to this, four legged animal, four legged animal, right? So some version of it...
Sliding into a cat.
Yeah. To me, they look like either badgers or raccoons. I can't quite tell, right? But there they are. So who saw this correctly?
Nobody.
Or?
No, sorry.
The alternative works too. Nobody or everybody, right? It depends on your paradigm, right? Everybody's paradigm is unique. There are over 8 billion paradigms on planet Earth. 8 billion. That is a huge number. We've lost sight of it. We have lost sight of what a billion is, but that's a huge number. Your paradigm, right? My usage, definition of the word, all the assumptions, beliefs, and values that give context to our world and how we process it. I have been sharing the same words with all of you, but I promise you, you're all getting different messages or you're all processing through your paradigm. Where is he going with this? This is not what I expected, right? Or, hey, this is more enjoyable than what I expected. Whatever the context is, depends on your paradigm. The Doug paradigm, with all of its elements of working in business leadership, executive stuff, right? And all the challenges and pitfalls that come with that all influence your paradigm and how you see the world. Bruce, your legal paradigm is so obvious. If I didn't know you were a lawyer, I would still know you're a lawyer, okay? Kind of thing. So we all have these unique paradigms, the assumptions, beliefs, and values. Where you grew up, Steve, influences your paradigm. The generation in which you grew up influences your paradigm. Your religion, if any, your atheism, your ancestry. Where do your people come from? Do you have a Polish last name? Are your people Polish? Do they come from Mexico, like mine? Jalisco and San Adoan, Mexico? Do they come from, you know, fill in the blank, right? And then what languages do you speak? Are you married? Are you happily married? Do you have kids? Do you have no kids and want kids? Like me, do you have too many kids? They're all grown adults now contributing to society, so I feel the pain about that. So our paradigms are very unique, but let's be clear about, here's the point we're going to make. 8 billion. More specifically, we hit that number in October of '22. Today, in June of '25, we have 8.2 billion paradigms. Now, in California, especially here in Malibu, we have lost sight of a million. There's no question we've lost sight of a million. Someone says, oh yeah, I'm worth a million. Oh, so you own a condo, you know, that's 500 square feet in Malibu? Okay, very good, right? We've lost sight of a million a long time ago, right, in our world. But billion is still a huge number, still a huge number. And let's put that in context here. If I said to you, to anyone in the room, how long ago was 1 million seconds? What would your answer be? What would your answer be? Any guesses? Shot in the dark?
Yesterday.
One million seconds ago, all good guesses, was about 11 days ago. Okay, 11 days, 13 hours, something like that, that's a million seconds ago. By contrast, how long ago was 1 billion seconds?
Thousand times whatever my last answer was.
Eleven thousand.
Thirty-two years ago. That's a billion. That's a huge difference between a million and a billion. And we put together these packages where, you know, we send a billion here, 50 billion there, 100 billion there, right, to foreign governments, because we do that for a variety of reasons, whether we agree or not, it's happening. Those dollars are going. And so with the billion-dollar packages that keep coming, right, we start to get desensitized, but it's a huge number. Just for the sake of fun here, how long ago was a trillion seconds? As we put into context, our 36 trillion-dollar debt. A trillion seconds ago was about 32,000 years ago. Just shy of 32,000 years, three ice ages ago. And we have that 36 trillion-dollar debt. Alright, I'm gonna get off that soapbox now, right? And share with you that with eight billion paradigms in the world, are any one of my fine council members here today thinking that you have been blessed and anointed with the right paradigm? The rest of us are lucky that we get to be in the same room with you, Mary Ann, because you are the queen of the paradigm universe. Anybody think that about themselves? Alright, so if there is no, and there is no king or queen in the paradigm universe, the challenge we have as we govern, as we interact with city leadership, is we engage in behaviors where we act like king or queen of the paradigm universe. As if there's only one right way to do this, and it's right here in my paradigm, and that's how I know it's right. When we project our paradigm out onto others, what we are doing is creating a foundation for conflict, right? If I say, there's only one right way to do this, Richard, and it's this, right? How often is that a true statement? In the operation of a municipality, there's only one right way to do this. I will share with you, if we're running part of that municipality, if we had a wastewater treatment plant, and we had to comply with federal regulations on the effluent this and that and the other, right? So we don't have an adverse impact on the environment, yeah. There is a right way following those regulations and how many of this or that that water can contain as it outflows from us, right? But those are operationally minimal. Most of the stuff we do and the stuff we direct is very discretionary. And going back to Haley's question earlier, you know, what is that balance of guiding versus overstepping or being burdensome to the leadership team? So much of it is the lawyer answer. It depends, right? How you oversee that guidance. But let's be clear. It is so rare that there is a single right way to do it. So when do we start acting like king or queen of the paradigm universe in what we do? When we start projecting our paradigm as if it's universal truth, rather than just our opinion, right? It is 100% okay for you to say to your colleagues, for you to say to city leadership, to a director who's chatting with you, well, in my opinion, you know, what I think should happen would be this. You know, that's just based on my experience and what I know, that's one thing. But if you're like, hey, what are you doing? There's only, why aren't you doing it the right way? A whole different measure comes out on how we're gonna successfully engage one another. So no one, no one took out the sword at Malibu. And that's the king of the paradigm universe in Malibu, right, Bruce?
Yeah.
No one did that. So we don't have that person here today, or ever will. It just will never happen. So with that in mind, we need to be clear about how we impact one another, right? Two opposing things can both be right. It depends on perspective, context, or interpretation, right? And that's how we, I think, hit some of the challenges that we have. And I'm gonna stop talking soon and facilitate a discussion about what those boundaries are that Haley asked about. And what I mean by this is, going back to why I shared the context of the JPA. In that dual hat thing that you have on when you're a JPA board member, you have a fiduciary duty to do what's in the best interest of the pool to ensure that there is a pool to support the members long-term, long-term sustainability, right, is what we're looking at. And so when a JPA comes to, hypothetically, when a JPA comes to a member and says, hey, we're concerned about X, right? And they express that concern in various ways or in various contexts, that expression can absolutely be correct because their job is the long-term sustainability of the pool. Can a member themselves say, you know, pick any city you can think of, and say, well, wait a minute, there was no foundation in what was being alleged against us, it was never factually supported, right, and so forth, and so I don't see why we're having this discussion, kind of a thing? Can that also be true? Yes, absolutely. Facts are the facts, right? In the good old lawyering days of mine, as an employment lawyer back in the 90s, I will share with you that all we could say is, you know, we bring in the clients the best we can. First, I was a plaintiff's lawyer suing everybody in LA, and then I was a defense lawyer. And so the facts take us where they take us. There's nothing we can do about that, the facts are the facts. But there are two opposing things that can be true, and a JPA can become concerned about a member and introduce potential consequences to that member even though the member can be right about their own facts related to a situation. Any question, comments, pushback, or anything on that? Now'd be a good time. Steve?
I, I, I mean, are you trying to defend JPA's decisions?
No.
Okay, I'm just trying to...
Not at all.
Okay.
Not at all. I'm just illuminating where we are at times with a member, hypothetically, with a member, and a JPA, right? And I saw it a lot. I was Director of Litigation Management for several JPAs. So I held the purse strings for a lot of cities, over 200 cities in California. And sometimes they're at odds, right? And we just need to be aware of the context for it so that we then can adopt a scope of the boundaries we're gonna talk about in a minute that makes sense to address, right? The concern that has been raised by that JPA.
I guess I'm just trying to get clarity on, is this session here specific to a member of council? Or what's been going on, or basically?
Why are we here in this?
What?
Why are we here in all this?
Yeah.
For simple reason.
Yeah, well, I was wondering if it's because I'm new, or we're revisiting, or we've gotten a complaint from staff, or I've done something, like, I wanted to clarify that all in the open, because I know there's stuff...
Let's just put it out there now, because it's on camera. This is all about you, Haley.
I was wondering. What did I do?
This is not, no, we are lying in paradise.
Okay, I just wanted to...
I'm gonna look at the camera and say, it is not about Haley.
It's not, sarcasm can be misinterpreted.
Yes, that's why I looked at the camera and clarified that. Hopefully that part's not edited out.
When you've been using the word member, you've been talking about a city, not a person.
No, no, member city.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, but when he says member, he means a member of the organization, not a member of the city council.
Yeah, let's be clear about that. JPAs have members. Members are public entities. That's a member, a public entity. And to answer your question directly, this is not directed at any one person.
Okay.
This is directed at, hey, how can we align our paradigms to do two things? One, work most effectively with our executive leadership team. We want to make sure we know those, the ideal relationship there and the scope of that. And two, to understand the impact of not doing that, the climate it creates, and the concerns that can create for the JPA you belong to. Years ago, I'll get to you, Mary Ann, then to Bruce. Years ago, in a pool, this is all a matter of public record, even though I won't name the city. One of our Bay Area pools that we were running, and we use the word pool and JPA synonymously, right? A risk-sharing pool and a joint powers authority, was a bad player, this one member, and it was a very political city in the Bay Area, and they had nine council members, right? And the fire department, you know, knew that they had three, police department knew that they had three, and the other three were just kind of at large, if you will. And it just wouldn't listen, wouldn't listen, wouldn't listen, wouldn't take the risk management advice, et cetera, so they were expelled. That is the worst-case scenario. And no one is certainly talking about that if we get more specific with the city of Malibu. That's not the case. So I don't want anyone to think or interpret, right, later on, that somehow we're creating a risk where we're gonna lose our JPA membership, because that's not what's happening. I don't want anyone interpreting that way, yeah.
I was just kinda, kinda reiterate that in a different way. That it is prudent in risk management to make sure that there is a check-in and that there is a good foundation, and everybody understands that there's a positive way to govern. And to make sure that your risk management is done properly, you check in and provide those tools and information to each member agency so that they can do work.
Very well stated, I'm sorry I stepped over you there on the end there. Your time in the JPA world has served you well. It is, that's exactly it, right? There are things that we can all engage in as best practices in a risk management context that benefit us. They benefit the city of Malibu, and they work, right? Bruce, you had your hand there.
Yeah, this is... You know, I wasn't sure when I came in here, what we're gonna be doing. I thought it was gonna be like a general, a very general training-type exercise. You know, the elephant in the room is that we have closed sessions, we know of things that are not publicly discussed, and we're not allowed, we're not able to or allowed to publicly discuss them, so we're not. You are aware of some things that occur in closed session because you have conversations with other participants in our closed-session proceedings, and they're not under a constraint, that they're not allowed to discuss it with you, even though we are. There's a subtext in some of this today. Some of it's very general, some of it's very subcut, there's a subtext, and it's, there's a very thin analogy or metaphor going on. And I need to understand how much we can talk in this public session about what you're telling us, or how much we have to play the game of just being generalized, because it's very awkward.
Yeah, I think we need to speak in hypotheticals here for you as a governance team, just because we don't want to disclose things that went on in a closed session, right?
The hypotheticals are so close that they're all but saying words. I mean, all but saying names and ideas. I mean, to me, you need to be very general, you need to be very specific. It's kind of a game to go in the middle.
But, so just to play off that, I mean, I think that that comes back to kind of your paradigm conversation. That when you think that your paradigm is everybody's paradigm, and then also, we're not unique. Other city councils, I mean, you can just pick up a paper, and you can look throughout California, and you can look throughout the United States. Very similar things are happening across all levels of government in the United States right now. So whether it's a specific thing that's happening here, there, everywhere else, there's a lot of dynamic change in how governance is occurring throughout levels of government. And so making sure that we're being positive and that we're not falling victim and causing harm and not being able to effectively govern our particular jurisdiction is pointing out things that have derailed other places. We want to make sure we're...
And if that governance, those other governance teams we're referring to where we opened the paper, are in California, I mean, they, like us, need to make sure they're complying with the Brown Act, right? Trevor, are you doing the training this afternoon on Brown Act, right? And others, so it'll be a good refresher. I know some of you know it frontward, backward, some of you know it very well, Bruce, I know you know the Brown Act. But it is a context for transparency that reminds us that people do not yield their sovereignty to the bodies that govern them and lead those places, right? Whatever that jurisdiction is. They don't yield it, they demand on remaining informed, right? And so what is it that we're going to build? A structure called the Ralph and Brown Act that says, you know, no secret ballots, meetings must be held within the jurisdiction, 72 hours' notice, any materials you get to see to make a fully informed vote, the public gets to see. I'm not trying to circumvent that training. But that's the structure. Everybody has a unique paradigm, but we cannot project that paradigm as if it is the right way in any given situation, I think is your point, Mary Ann, right? So Doug?
Yeah, I just want to put something in here because I think, I don't know if you skipped over it or you're into the minutes, but with my background in banking and also in insurance, one of the things that we always run into is risk management and then calculating the amount of risk, usually in dollar amounts, that certain instances imply. And I think I had this conversation with you, where I was talking about, in banking, there are profiles, if you have a large enough body of a transaction, you're going to get X amount of loss. And I always had to explain this, when I was in consulting, of loans for loan laws for banks, and these were even major banks. People would say, oh, that's not a bad loan, that's money good. We're never gonna lose money on that guy. But when you look at, say, 100 loans that look just like that, and you look back and say, five years ago, if they were in this profile, what was the loss record on that? The answer is staggering. And I'll give you an example from the group, and which is this, because a lot of bankers would realize that if you're talking about their portfolio, if you have an industrial building that has a negative cash flow, in other words, the income is less than the expenses, what's the probability of loss? And you go, oh, we're never gonna lose money on that. But the answer is, for most banks, it's somewhere between 12% to 20% of the balance of those loans that have that profile today will be lost money over five years. And when you put it that way, and you look back on it, you go, alright, we're looking at profiles, and in our insurance businesses we had, which was liability, workers' comp, fire prevention, we started looking at these profiles, what are the common profiles of our losses? And that's the ones we want to focus on for loss prevention. And I think that's where, as you were talking about examples and so forth, the characteristics of these actions usually result over time, not necessarily every time, but over time, in a certain amount of loss. And in the insurance business, that's how you set your loss profile.
Very good. Thank you for that. I found that very educational.
I'll send you, I'll send you an end point.
This is very clearly a situation where I believe, now, people in the room may disagree with me, people viewing this later may disagree with me, but I've worked with a lot of councils, right, a lot of them, all in California. My work in other states is usually related to higher education, but in California, I work with local government quite a bit. By measure, by contrast, this is anecdotal, right? This is not empirical data. I think as a governance team, the way you conduct yourselves in your meetings, your preparation at the various levels, some of you are like, you've consumed every note in that staff report, every letter, every suggestion, et cetera, every support document. As far as governance teams go, I think you're doing just fine, okay? I don't think that anyone can criticize you for, you know, the way you conduct yourselves. I think your code of conduct was thoughtful enough to help us understand the guidelines and the parameters that we can all process and create a collective paradigm now for how we're gonna conduct ourselves. When I first started working with you, that was a concern that had been planted in my paradigm to be mindful of, right? They don't get along as well as they should, and I think the persons, well, we're sharing that, I think we're living a little bit in the past, right, based on that, but that's certainly not the case now. The challenge you have, I don't believe is in the governance part of you when you're together, right? It's the behaviors that occur that are contributing to a climate that isn't ideal for employees in the city of Malibu. Now, there's nothing I'm saying about that or referring to, Bruce, I'm looking at you when I say this, where you are crossing the line of legality, even the lane, the proverbial lane of a council member, right? But it is perhaps the quantity of time you are consuming from leadership in the city of Malibu. You are by far on that top 5% of council members who demand a lot of time from their leadership team. There are some council members, you know, at the other end of the spectrum. And when we had binders for our staff report, I'm sorry, for our agendas, right? It was always disheartening for me, as an elected official myself formerly, to see a colleague walk in with their binder, you know how they're sealed up with paper? You know, just a sealed band around it, if you will? To see that council member, uh, that other elected official, school board member, take that, that bind and tear it for the first time as they're sitting on the dice, right? To conduct our work.
So, you know, it's interesting, 'cause this, this follows up on a lunch meeting I had with somebody a couple days ago. We're both a small town and a major destination. Um, and we've got a very active, um, the residents are very active.
Yes.
And, and they're very demanding on us, I suspect, more on a one-on-one basis than many other places.
Is that true for the rest of you as well? They're demanding on you, Steve? Doug, yeah?
Right, and, and this is the point. So, so I was, I was at lunch with a, with a, um, person who's involved in the, in the building arena and he was talking about how every, almost everywhere else is, um, much more automated than we are and here it's, it's very one-on-one. And I said, "Well, you know, I actually think our residents appreciate the one-on-one." And how many places are you talking about that are our size? And I identified one that he thought was our size. And I said, "No, that's, that's an unincorporated part of a county." So that's, that's actually, you know, the area you were in might be small, but you're dealing with the county. And he said, "Oh, I really can't think of one then." And, and I didn't say this, but I wanted to say, well, you know, and you probably wouldn't be sitting with a council member from the city of Los Angeles to express your concerns. Here I am having lunch with you. So, you know, we are in a small town. Our residents are very much active in our governance. We are very active in the governance. And the fact that we are, um, we interact a lot with our management isn't because we're, um, more demanding than they are, like, say, in Los Angeles. It's because we're more, we're, we're in a small community. And, you know, yes, that's gonna mean there's gonna be more interaction than you would expect in most places. But, I mean, I wonder what's your experience in other ten thousand, five thousand resident towns?
Um, I'm gonna give you an answer, you'll understand. It depends. So the reality is, right? Um, smaller towns are, what I believe are the purest form of democracy. Because you have access to your people, your representative government, right? Um, even state assembly, um, state senators in California, what is the percentage of people that actually have access to them directly? Whereas here, in any other small town, anywhere, not just California, I see you at the grocery store, at a restaurant, at the park, at the beach, at a laundromat maybe, right? And here I am. "Hey, so what's going on? You know, is that skate park, you know, ever gonna go in over here? Because, you know, my kids are da-da-da-da-da-da-da," right? And then they have access to you. To me, that, that's an amazing thing. And, and I applaud to me that you represent, I applaud you because you represent to me that purest form of democracy, right? Without casting their own vote, they feel like, "Hey, I'm gonna help you cast your vote," right? On this particular issue. So yeah, small towns definitely require this discussion more than medium and large cities. No question, no question. But we still have to have this discussion because of the impact it has on the leadership of the city, on the employees. It's the cumulative effect of a half hour with you, um, twenty minutes with you, an hour with you, thirty minutes with you and an hour with you on a regular basis to our executive, you know, in charge and the executive team in charge. Add that up, right, uh, in a week, and what does that look like? You've taken away two and a half days, right, we'll say, of a person's workday over a period of one week's time. It is really handcuffing to people at an executive level for that to happen. So your point is well-taken. I'm not gonna have this discussion with the city council of Los Angeles or even Santa Monica, right? But, but we are having it here and it's for a reason and a purpose to ensure that we are being the best version of us that we can be and understand with self-awareness and self-regulation, which we're about to cover, what we can do. What, what's your response to that?
Well, just, you know, on the other side of it though is, you know, this is a part-time job that's all but volunteer.
Yes.
But you'd be amazed at how much time we spend on a weekly, when you say that the, that the cumulative twenty minutes here, hour here, we have that same accumulation with our residents. We're, I, I spent twenty, thirty hours a week on this part-time volunteer position interacting with people who, I'm then funneling to the management what I'm hearing and what, and what they're looking for.
So the question...
And I could cut that off, but...
No, no, you, your twenty to thirty hours a week, that's what you signed up for. That's this job in Malibu, this elected position.
That's separate from preparing for...
No, that's right, that's right. But that's part of the package of being council of Vice Mayor Bruce Silverstein, right, for Malibu.
Right, and my point is, and that's part of the package of signing up to work for the city of Malibu too.
Uh, that's where we may differ on our paradigms. That's Bruce's paradigm, right? Not, I think, Jerry's paradigm, or if I could put one out there in the world that I see, a sort of best practice paradigm in small towns, right? There's the challenge right there. Haley, what were you gonna say?
Yes, I think to, um, to sort, so, 'cause I'm new, I have a different perspective, right? So there's an election, we get elected by residents, we are residents. So we also see things from that side of the street, which is, we run for a reason. And that reason is to live in a city that we have expectations from. And, you know, whether that's the road, or safety, or, uh, dark sky ordinance. So we have our goals or our perspectives, paradigms.
Yeah.
And then, um, I think that the residents are very, very demanding because they, I don't mind that, right? I am one of those people. So therefore, we're interfacing with residents. So I think of ourselves as sort of a buffer, I hope, between us as council, 'cause they elected us. They took time to get to know who I am. I'm a mother, I'm a, you know, surfer, whatever. So we have a repres, we have a response, this is my paradigm, a responsibility to those people. I think that those people, uh, which I was, don't realize that there's a very separate entity, which is the city staff. Then we have the council that are elected, but they are not elected. So I think in the city, there is a moment that needs, there needs to be some education around how much this council can do, how much we, I can do with them, how much they can actually do. Um, because I think to manage the expectations of the residents, which are really high, right? And if you think about why they're high, it makes sense to me. I have high expectations of myself, I have high expectations of my city, of the government here. I have, and that's just the way I am personally. So I think that we will keep running up into this issue until residents understand where those parameters are. Where I have to say all the time, "That's not, I can't do, that's not me. That's not something..." And they go, "Why? I elected you." And I go, "I'm not a strong mayor. I don't even know, I'm not the city manager."
Well, let me, let me get to two points before I lose them. I'm at the stage of life where if I don't do it now, they're gone, right? So, so two points here. One is, you are in a transitional phase in your public service career right now. It's an early phase, right? And it'll be as long as hopefully you want it to be. But the transition is going from buddy to boss, right? It's like when you're a coworker and you get promoted. Exactly. It's like when you're a coworker and you, you get, you get, um, promoted to manager. You have to create certain buffers that didn't exist before when you were buddy with this person who you worked with. Now, you're residents, to finish the analogy here, you're residents, you're activists, you're involved, right, with these folks, and then you get elected, right? And so earlier I used the example with Mary Ann of JPA board member at times, takes it off, city of Malibu, right, fiduciary now, what's in our best interest, et cetera. You have to do the same thing. There are moments in time when you are resident, Halen Conrad, right? And then there are the times when you put on your hat and you are a member of a governance team that is charged with setting a vision, ensuring that vision is being executed by city staff, et cetera, right? We still haven't talked about the boundaries for what that is, but we're gonna get there here. And, and so you have to separate yourself at times. Accessibility, you don't have to separate that. We want them to reach out to you. I love that they can reach out to you. But what we need to figure out is how you can meet their needs by saying what you said. "Hey, this isn't a strong mayor form of government. This is a council manager form of government." And so I am not boots on the ground, you know, um, doing the public works responsibilities or the building, um, compliance or anything else. And so here's what you do if you need help with that. And you send up to where they're supposed to go, right? And, or you share with them, "You know what? And this is okay as a council member. Um, resident Bruce, I'm, I'm right with you on that. I don't know why it's so difficult to get one of these permits for a block park, you know? And I went through that frustration myself for several years and I finally decided, you know what? I'm just gonna follow the process and plan six months in advance now for this to happen, right? But I, I feel you. And, and you can be empathic, validating, all those things. And those are great things for us to do. It is not patronizing and condescending unless we make it so, right? It is genuine expression as an elected official that it's okay to be frustrated. I think anyone in your shoes, Mary Ann, would be frustrated with what you're experiencing in our schedule for cleaning up that park in your neighborhood, right? We do have limitations, da-da-da-da. And so I'm sorry, I'm sorry you feel that way. And sometimes that's all you can do, Halen, which is hard because you wanna be a get-it-done gal. You do. And you wanna be a get-it-done guy, Steve, right? And you want these things to happen and you wanna, boom! But we can't. That's not who you are, that is not your scope, that just isn't.
So I actually, I have a question, but I actually agree with all that. But then again, that's just a, your paradigm here, that you're telling us right now. I happen to agree with that paradigm, but we could all actually disagree with that.
You absolutely could.
'Cause it's not, 'cause that's, you know, 'cause you said I come from a legal background?
Yeah.
'Cause that's not a legal requirement of governance, that's just a, one paradigm of what makes sense.
Here's the challenge with the, the compliance component of what you're referring to. That's not what the law says I need to be doing. If you choose to be right, rather than do something that is the right thing for our situation based on the collective paradigm, that's problematic.
I'm saying we could have a, we could, we could have a collective paradigm that's different than the one you're expressing. We could, I'm not saying we do. I have a question. Are, are we, I, I think it's fair to ask right now, I mean, 'cause we have a new governance team at the, at the senior level to vote for.
Are you ready?
Are, are we, are, are we, are you experiencing the things that he's generically talking about right now from us? Because I, it's important for us to understand that, if you are.
A lot of emails constantly that's our pri, our priorities. Yep. But, you know, we, we've been knocking on, you know?
Emails from us?
Huh?
Emails from us or from the residents?
Uh, I think council-specific.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Yeah.
It's both. Not everybody.
It, it is both.
Do, do you feel that, do you feel that you can say this is...
It's not everybody, it's just some, it's just...
When it occurs, do you feel like you, you can't tell them, tell whoever it is of us?
Oh, no, I, I pick the phone. Someone, someone here will tell you that I would be like, "I'm very sorry, but we are swamped over here right now, cannot deal with this right now." And, you know, we'll put it on the list. "Thank you very much, have a great day." I, I don't have a problem with that. But I'm, you know, I live here, I know what everybody's like, you know? So you, you know, and you can see the neighbor, whoever it is, it's sending their nasty gram of the day. And you're like, "Okay, calm down." But, you know, it's, it's a different thing. I, I live here, I know how to manage some of the folks around here. Um, you know, because I, I've lived with them for so long and I know them and I, I take their matters seriously. But at the moment, you know, if we're working on priority for you all, for the city, it's, I have to tell them, you know, "Can you, can you give me some time? And we'll get back to you." Like, you know, by, by the end of the week. So I, I think it's up to us, just as you're telling them, they have to, you know, push back on some of the folks that they get. We have to do that too. I, I mean, I, I know Bruce, I don't have a problem. I'm sure you all receive my phone calls or, you know, my emails, like, "Got it, on it." You know, you'll hear back from me. Um, but I, I can't say that's how everyone else is felt beforehand or what I, what I feel.
I can't.
I, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, listen, I don't wanna talk about, I'm still up right now. Richard, are you, are you getting contacted by, by any of us? Without naming any names, are you getting contacted by any of us and it's, and we're free imposing on you?
Anytime a request comes to Candace, not ev, not, not every time, but, but most of the time, if there's something that Candace thinks we should act upon, I'm quickly included. Which is great, that's, that's the way it should work.
Yeah, we work really well together. We just, we'll, we'll knock it out, you know, on a, you know, on a, on a two-person...
But you're not answering the question. The question is, is the city council in, in, in dating your everybody right? With all this communication that's making your life miserable?
No. No, I would say no. But I will say, there is a higher volume of requests in Malibu than, than the other cities I've worked for.
Go back to what Bruce said.
By council or by residents?
Both.
Okay.
Yeah.
'Cause I'd like to parcel it out.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I, I would very much appreciate personally, and there's, and like, just the transparency so that I know, because this is my first gig and this is, you've been doing this longer than I have. And I don't mind whatever the cameras see, but so that I know, like, I would like to, we know the residents, uh, you know, that's different. But from council, day-to-day, I always see, see the two of you together. I was trained to do that by Mr. Tony, to, if I have something, I see, see Alexis, right? But, and I also didn't always expect responses, but it was me putting something out there. I can't even think of what the last email I sent to you guys was, but is it too much for me, let's say? Which I don't mind, I need to know.
Well, I don't, I don't know that we...
I just don't understand what all of this is and we don't get specific.
Right, other than speaking generalities, which is, yes, you are...
Do we have a question? Like, do we have a council to management, day-to-day, three emails a day? Do I get to know what is too much and what is not too much?
Yes.
Do I have that?
Let's go through these two things right here and then that's what we're gonna talk about for the rest of our time.
Well, I, I just wanna, I just wanna, so my, my paradigm, I'll, I'll put it table. My paradigm is, I can reach out to the city manager every time and anytime I feel the need to do so. And the city manager is free to say, "No time to deal with this, this isn't on my radar," or, you know, "Or good point, let's deal with it." Um, I don't do that with others. If I do it, it's on a very rare occasion.
Others, you mean directors or...
Correct, correct, correct. And that's what I like done, so I'm trying to, and, and, and to me, that's, you know, that's the way the ma, to me, my paradigm, the, the city manager then filters those things. Like when, when, um, says that I get a lot of requests, well, that's because the city manager's determined, "Oh, this is something that is worth appro, worth doing." Because if it's not, the, the request wouldn't be passed down. I wanna understand, you know, who, who on the staff of anybody are we imposing on, if, if anybody, today? Now, not, not two years ago, not a year ago even, under our current management, who, if anyone, are we imposing on? Because I suspect it would be Candace, because that makes sense, that's the city manager. And again, she has the power easily to deflect it or address it.
But to, to use a Reagan term, it's trickled down, um, by impact.
But it should only trickle down, it only trickles down if it's, if it, if it gets through the filter.
So that, I do wanna cover this, 'cause this will impact our discussion without putting any more burden on you to, to answer that. But if you have something to say, I feel like I cut you off, Candace.
I mean, we're, we're transparent. I'm like a control, like, so if something comes in and it has to do with, with the, with the beaches and somebody's upset about that, it's like, okay, it goes in. We used to have this department at the State Department for, you know, incoming, like, like, you know, calls that you had to deal with. These people all sat in a room and they literally like just had headphones on and they just dealt with incoming.
Like a trios, right?
Yes.
Where it needs to go.
It was amazing, they were just, and, and it was like, okay, they had all these, this gear and then there was like a new rotation of people coming in with their headgear, handling all this incoming and then directing it into whatever, you know, federal offices need to go to. I was fascinated by it. But it's pretty much like the same thing. But it's pretty much like the same thing, and, and, you know, I, I find the days are really cool, because there's a lot of incoming, it goes, gets, you know, goes to the right director about which department, how to respond to this, let's get this done, you know, all that. It's a lot, it's a, it's a lot of that.
It can't, it's, it's...
But, yeah, and then, but, but the other part that, that, um, takes away from, cause it's, it's a lot, because it's a rebuilding and recovery period, I get it, um, is that there's some serious long-range issues that, you know, the city is looking at, has to deal with. Um, you know, we're looking at, you know, trying to get more resources and things like that. So, you know, all of, all of this takes away from making the big things happen, so you end up being a reactionary organization as opposed to an organization that is, you know, resilient and sustained. And, and that's the one thing, you know, is, I haven't been here that long, but, you know, as someone who's worked at a lot of different organizations, um, and I think understaffing has a lot to do with it, but that we are very reactionary, and I, I know the folks around here, they're very demanding. So, but that's what happens.
Okay, but I, I really appreciate, um, Helen's question of, let's parse this. So, look, focus only on city council members, not on the residents, not on, on anyone else, just the city council members. And let's focus not on Candace, just a moment, not on the city manager. Are the city council members making demands on the staff? Because the city manager has the capacity to determine, if the demand goes on the city manager, whether it's an appropriate demand to pass on to a staff member or not.
Uh, let's, let's eliminate making demands, and use the expression, is the council...
Reaching out to them even.
Impacting adversely the, the staff or anyone else by their communication, by reaching out, or anything else?
So, I wanna, I do wanna parse out from statements on the dais, statements to the public, statements that might be made at the grocery store.
I'm not talking about any of those.
Direct communication, direct communication between a city council member and someone that's subordinate to the city manager. Full stop.
Yeah, Richard, what were you using?
Yeah, I think this is a great, uh, discussion, because it's important to have periodically, you know, we all get caught up in the day-to-day.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, it's really important to consider, when you establish priorities, you're establishing limits. Right? So, if something is a priority, you're gonna spend the time that you have addressing it. And for an organization this size, we can't have as many priorities as a larger organization inherently, because we have fewer personnel to manage. So, let's say we have ten priorities. As we receive new requests, if they align with those priorities, we can try to make it happen. But if it's something brand-new, that requires a unique set of analysis, so say, financial considerations, or workload considerations, or timing considerations, it's, it requires pausing, stepping back, looking at the ten, and either saying, okay, we need to drop one of the ten, or we need to create a new project.
I would totally appreciate that, but that could come from a city council leader, and we can address that. The specific question is, are city council members directly interacting, not from the dais, but on a daily basis, during working hours or off-working hours, with members of the staff that's, that's causing any issues? Are, are those communications occurring? I know, I know when I communicate with someone other than the city manager, and I know that, I know how infrequent it is. I, I know for me, I don't know for others. And that's what I'm trying to understand, without naming names, are we interacting with staff members in a way that's putting pressure on them? Cause I don't know that we are. And that, cause that's what's...
Did you say hell?
Yeah, but I think the narrative of interacting is a challenge.
No, this is a good time.
But that's what you're suggesting, that we're kind of...
Okay, so one at a, wait, stop, we're gonna go one at a time. Could you please call on each council member to have their...
But I'd like to answer the question, not...
I understand that, but it's...
We're not gonna not answer the question, but I, I just...
But they're answering, they have the problem.
But we're not going to not answer, we're going to answer.
Answered, just answered, and said, no, no.
So, so here's, here's what I wanna say before I call on Madam Mayor and then Helen. Um, Councilmember Helen, if I'm gonna go that way.
Oh, that's okay.
Um, and, and that is, are we interacting with the staff in a way that's burdensome or whatever else? I, I think that doesn't frame the narrative completely the way it should, right?
It's a piece of it, I'm just trying to figure out whether that piece exists or doesn't exist.
Madam Mayor.
So, what I was gonna say is that, when you're a council member, you hold a different level of, um, response that the staff is gonna get. This is what I discovered as being a council. When I ask something, it automatically has a certain weight and a certain priority to the staff. There's an expectation that I have to answer this, this question, I have to resolve this issue.
Even if you didn't intend that.
Exactly. Just because of the fact that I sit as a council member, I'm on a hierarchy of, I gotta respond to this in some way, shape, or form, or I've gotta deal with this in some way, shape, or form.
Cause you're the ultimate boss's boss.
Exactly.
Right, yeah.
So, automatically, me asking a question is going to be a paradigm that the city manager, and then by extension, those people who are in that management level, have to be like, okay, how am I going to, what am I gonna give up? And then it gets to a point where it's like, okay, we're so far off the tracks, we're not staying on. You know, and other things. This fire, these fires have shifted the attention, and it has kept the city from moving forward in a meaningful way, technology-wise, um, other things that we need to be doing as a city to move us forward every single day. So, those are the two things.
Helen.
Oh, um, I'll, you can go.
Steve.
Again, we still haven't had an answer to the question, all right? Uh, which I think we, we deserve, that, that has been the issue, just hang on, okay? Uh, and, and, look, this is not easy on any of us, all right? I mean, I've, I've been doing this now for eight years, this is my last four, all right? And you did calls, and, as Bruce said earlier, our residents are active. They, they even have, and they're active and they got money, and they're not used to taking no for an answer, all right? Now, I get calls all day long, all right? And what I try and do is balance out the process, it says, some of the calls I get, I, I'll try and answer for the folks, right? I'll say, well, you know, we're working on this, or this is coming down the line, it's gonna show up on the city council agenda, and, and, and there are other things, and I try to make the best decisions I can, or, you know, I can't go any place with this thing, right? So I, you try and just say, if, look, is something we're gonna put on pause? But I'll tell you, when I tell them to put on pause, okay, they say, screw it, I'm gonna call the city manager, right? And then, all we're doing is taking some of that stuff that, you know, we have not been able to solve on our own, and they push it up the pipeline. Kids are looking for an answer, and they want an answer, and they're gonna keep pushing till they get one. And, but I, I do wanna try and get an answer to the question we've been asking now for the last fifteen minutes, are we overburdening the staff with requests? Seems to me to be a valid question.
Request to the staff.
Yeah.
So Helen's comments, and then, I think we should take a break, cause you've been sitting for an hour and a half.
Well, I'm finding this really enriching, personally. Because I really need to get to the bottom of this, for us to have a healthy, copacetic relationship moving forward with a new city manager. I need to really understand, without hurt feelings or anything like that, the, the rules of engagement. Right, so if we're gonna engage, I'd like to know the rules of engagement, because when I get a resident that's emailing me, my car got towed yesterday, or texts me, all of these texts, and I go, I don't deal with the tow truck company. I don't know how to help you, except this is what I believe you should do. See, email the city. These are the, email the council. We can't, and then I explain the Brown Act. And I say, there's the city manager, there's the assistant, there's the tow truck company. After that, it's out of my hands, but I'm trying to play as a buffer. So if I can solve something before it gets to staff, I really truly try to do that. But there's a lot of things that I don't have control of. Um, now that being said, Mary Ann's point, we're constantly triaging. And your point, we are very reactionary, and so this is unsustainable. In my opinion, it is an unsustainable program that we're running. And you shouldn't be the lady with the headset, and neither should the city manager who's coming on that's going, okay, safety, okay, pro it. So there has to be maybe some sort of, where we look into how, strategic work for them, which is coming up, how to help answer that, because we're not, this is not the last disaster. We're, our residents are not going away, nor should they. They pay a lot in tax, and they pay a lot of price to live here, both economically and philosophically, to be burning down over and over and over again. But I would love for us to come up with something where residents aren't as angry, council's not getting thrown in the bus, cause I believe in the five of us, I got to know each one of them very personally, and I think we're all trying to adhere to a process. And I've gotten to know you, you know, some of the, the staff's amazing. So there are these pickups that we need to really figure out.
And, and just so we're clear, I, I do think we should take a quick break.
Without getting here.
This is about us trying to find the right balance, you're all saying the same thing, so that we are not burdening staff, because the climate does seem to be an issue, the culture, when I say that, right? Of the city of Malibu, and our ability to attract, mostly to retain people, which we have a lot of vacancies presently, right? In, in the city, so, let's take a break, let's go get, get, cross the hall, biological break, fill your coffee, do whatever. And then Steve, Councilmember Steve, we will come back and answer that question.
I would appreciate it.
All right.
All right.
That was a good break, let's come back together and finish these discussions together, if we could.
We're so good to know each other too, so.
You know we're being recorded, right?
But you guys are recording it.
That I don't know.
No, that's...
Is, I noticed the city's camera, but is the city recording?
Yeah, um, do we need Trevor in the room before we start?
No, you can start.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, we want to reconvene with the answer to multiple, several of you have asked, and Steve has insisted on, which is a good thing, Steve. So, so what about this, Candace?
No, I, I do not feel that, um, you're calling the directors directly, you know, directly. I, I do feel that there, and I have heard, that some of our commission members are calling directors. And therein, I do believe there needs to be training for those commissioners, this type of training, for them to know that that is not appropriate.
Okay.
So, that's where that's coming from, Helen and then Madam Mayor.
Is there a way, without being here right now, I mean, I think you're right, so the commissioners' training is today, correct?
The Brown Act training.
There's pressure training too, yep.
Yeah, so let's totally bring that up. Okay, great.
Well, the other thing, look, we appoint the commissioners. So if you got a problem with somebody, yell, all right? I mean, I've got the ability to call my commissioner and say, you know, stop doing what the hell you're doing. And I've got no problem doing it, but you gotta let me know.
And, and that's the thing, sometimes we don't, we don't know. It, it takes a while to bubble up, it's just, you know, we'll hear, we'll hear about it, you know?
Right.
But, but, you know...
Just, you know, I've been in management longer than I understand, you gotta say no to some people, all right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's just, that's part of the job.
Madam Mayor.
Well, I think that's something that we need to be clear on also, is, it's okay, you know, that we are a council that can hear no, and that we are accepting to that. And I don't know that we have necessarily projected that as a council, that we are open to hearing both positive and negative feedback on how our actions are impacting the staff.
We've actually said that multiple times at our strategic planning sessions.
Right.
We, 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 when we've had the senior staff here in the room with us, and we've made that clear, whether they can get it, whether they accept it or not is another question.
But I think that goes back to my previous comment, that as a council member, there is just a certain, um, a way that staff interacts with those council members, just by sheer fact of that title. That title can interfere with getting that constructive feedback to us also.
And, and Bruce made the point also, right? When it comes to, for example, when you're in your governance team mode on the dais, and you're doing your work of the people, there are comments you make that somebody in the city, an employee of the city, might be like, oh, uh, the vice mayor said this, I, I better jump on this. When that's not your intent or your directive in any way, it was just something you shared, and they took that initiative, they interpreted that way through their paradigm, or whatever they did, right? That part, we're not talking about here. If they choose to do that of their own volition and take it that way, you know, then it'll be Richard who says, what are you doing? Why are you doing that? Because, and then we can make the corrective measures that need to be made with a limited time.
So again, though, without naming any names, I, it would be helpful to know the specific types of actions that are occurring, if any, that are causing either the city manager or the junior staff to the city manager to take on responsibilities that they feel are distracting them from the job that they're, that they're supposed to be doing. Because I, I'd like to understand that, that seems to be the, the, I agree, the general thing that you're, you're alluding to. We've now established it's not by reaching out to individuals and giving them direction or asking them to do things. I'd like to know what are the things we're doing, whoever it is, that's causing that, um, additional burden?
Douglas. I think we're drilling down too soon, too, too deep on this topic right now. I think, you know, everybody wants to make sure they're not causing a problem. But I think what we're really seeing here is a symptom of what, there is a problem. And hopefully, that's what you're gonna get into. If the problem is, we're understaffed, or we, uh, you know, haven't made it clear, and we don't need an answer about it. But let's find out what the problem is, and that, cause I think...
That's the thing, that's what we're trying to do.
We might be around the question, let's just, let's jump right down to it.
No, I don't think this is the problem, this isn't the problem. This isn't about reaching out to somebody, that's not the problem, that's a symptom of, like, and I'll tell you what, exactly, I just had a text message, a resident goes, I need my brush cleared.
Me too.
But, but my answer is because I know what the answer is, I say, call station seventy, they'll take care of it. As opposed to having to reach out to the staff and get to them. The symptom is, you know, we're reaching out to the staff, the problem is...
No, we were just told what I had.
Well, wait, wait. It, is it the commissioners are clear? And, I'm just making a point. The problem may be, we don't know how to handle it, or our commissioner doesn't know how to handle it. And we need to train them, so that we solve that problem, as opposed to dressing the symptom, that's all.
Some of the stuff you're not gonna be able to handle, there's, I could, I get seven-thirty this morning, I'll be getting phone calls. Okay, the residents will say, what's Sam Allison City Council doing? You know, the stuff you guys say you're gonna get finished, and I can, okay, so, I gotta talk to this person, all right? And you gotta sit back and say, look, you know, this is the process, it takes time. And, and I don't know after, I finished the conversation with them, whether they said, okay, Steve, I agree with you, or they say, healthy, see, I gotta talk to somebody that's got more power than you, I'm gonna call Bruce or somebody else.
Right, Helen, and then I wanna make a point, just on a couple slides, and then we can continue the dialogue, okay?
Um, I'm having this issue too with residents, the phone calls, especially with brush clearance, because there's a, there's a need for it with a deadline, we don't have any information, what's happening with Hillside, I'm like, I don't know who owns Hillside, call those people. And I don't, I haven't even brought this up to you guys, because I, it, it, to me, I'm always trying to flag what to bring to you guys.
I just made an announcement, it was in the newsletter that we put out, I made an announcement on the stage about brush clearance, where you call.
It's not there, it's...
But, but for you, you should just have that, we have that, it's in the newsletter from last week.
I think it's more about other lands.
I, well, it was, if, but if you're saying the city is calling you about their place, you think, here, this is, you know, this is the email. But I think what we're trying to do is push out more information, that's why we started doing the newsletter, so that people had more information, that they could learn how to, and to contact where it fall themselves. So, I think the more we're able to do that, the better.
And I think that there is this kind of, um, culture in the city with the residents, that they want everything to be done for them. And I think that they look to us as giving them simple answers, which I don't always have. And then I am like, that's where I think it kind of, there's this conundrum of, how do I get the answers to help the residents? But then it might be clogging your inbox, so.
So, I, I appreciate that, you know, and I've rethought it, we have forty-five minutes left on my time with you. And, and I really do want to get some of these, this boundary discussion in place with you. So we're all on the same page. All this was going to say is, is simply that, to your point on self-awareness, right? We may not know the impact that our communication, our interaction, whatever it is with a member of the city staff, whether it's this level or below, uh, is going to have, right? We may not be aware. There is two parts of self-awareness, hi, my name is Bruce Silverstein, and I'm strong at this, I'm strong at that, not so great at this, I'm trying to improve that, that's great. That's good self-knowledge, provided it's accurate, Bruce, right? But, but then there's the other half of self-awareness for all of us, one that we all need to be working on, and it is, I understand the impact that my behavior is having on the people around me. Right, I understand the impact, and to your point, sometimes we don't realize that because I'm a council member, the mayor, whomever, sending this information along to somebody, I'm just sending it along, that's my intent, right? Councilmember Conrad sending along this little brush thing that came up to so-and-so. And then, if I'm an employee of the city, I'll be honest, I'll be like, oh, this council member is doing X, Y, and Z, right? And, and asking me for this, or tell me this, I guess she wants me to deal with this. May not have been your intent.
What if it's just FYI?
Yeah, still, that would be something, it depends on the person, right? But it's nice to say that and give context.
Yeah.
I would do that. But the question is, right, do we understand that? Because I get the collective sense, you're, you're, when it comes to how you're impacting the culture, this is an outsider who has known you for eight months, and in that time, really only interacted with you each, for maybe a total of two or three hours, and interviews, meetings like this, et cetera. My sense is, you're well-thought-of people, you're capable, you're talented, right? Individually, you come together in extraordinary ways where people think, hey, Doug, you're an extraordinary individual, you're my council member. Doug, you're an extraordinary individual, you're my council member, right, kind of thing. But as far as the impact on the culture, right? And I don't know how forthcoming the staff could ever be on this. Seems like you come together as extraordinary individuals and as a council team, when it comes to cultural impact, you become very ordinary, right? You become very impactful without knowing it. I mean, you have people making decisions at times that rationally don't make sense to me, right? Not this council, but other people in reaction to what you're doing. Or the commissioners are doing it, it could be either one. So, so my question is, are we just gonna keep doing things the way we've done things? And expect different results as far as attracting and retaining talent? Staff level, executive level, et cetera? How, are we just going to continue our current level of communication and interaction? Are we gonna self-regulate more? Would that be helpful? Bruce?
I was, I was just, I would argue that in the four years I've been on city council, I, I think we've been working towards improvement, what you're discussing. I think we have made improvement. Is there, is there more room for improvement? Of course, there always is. But I think we actually are aware of the issues and are moving towards the right result. But there's sometimes we don't agree on what the right result is.
Let's discuss one right now. Emailing our executive team, for example, right? Is there a reasonable amount of email or a timeframe for those emails? Because you may say, hey, just because I'm emailing her at midnight, Haylen emailing Candace at midnight, doesn't mean I want her to answer at midnight and I put an FYI on there. But just FYI. But does that impact, uh, a city leader in a particular way? Based on what you said earlier, and I agree with, it can. My experience with cities all over, it can, because of who you are, a member of this governance team. It carries weight, whether you want it to or not, it carries weight. So, with that in mind, what, what do we think is a reasonable amount of time?
Yeah, I'll answer on that.
Yeah.
I, I believe texts, and the beauty of texts and emails is that they go out when you are ready to send them out and they can sit there as long as they need to sit there until they're responded to. You don't need to be cognizant of when you're sending them out at all. Everyone has the liberty to respond to them when they deem appropriate. And they should know, especially when it's an employee relationship, that they're not required to do it during off hours.
Well, see, there's you projecting your paradigm.
I'm agreeing, I, I understand that.
You're projecting with, and they should know, right? That's a Bruceism right here, that all of you may or may not agree with, right? But I'm saying, in my experience with employees, with that they should know, they don't have to respond. That is not a universal paradigm. And they feel compelled on a Saturday, when they get the email, to look stuff up, maybe come down here, find something, and then send it back to you by seven PM on Saturday, right? So, could we self-regulate and stop ourselves from sending this?
But when I said they should know, I mean, I mean they should be educated to be effective.
That, that's better.
I didn't mean that, that innately you need to understand it.
Well, and also, I mean, you know, especially in our city, given how, um, emergency prone we are.
Yeah.
And our city leadership is expected to respond when there is an emergency. That means their phones are on twenty-four seven. And, you know, unless they have designated somebody else that, that, you know, they have scheduled time off and they've appointed, uh, another person to be in charge. They're getting these messages at twenty-four seven. When do they know not to respond to that particular thing? Because they're technically on duty. So, how is it
That's a great point.
That they triage that particular thing? If their phone's ringing it, you know, or their text message, or their emails are getting alerts, they have to look at that because that could be an emergency request. So, how do they monitor to respond to emergencies? But also triage whether or not that email they're getting at that particular day and time is,
Same way I do, I scan the emails, I said, which ones are important, which ones aren't.
But at one o'clock in the morning, you're still getting woken up. So, is that appropriate, that that person doesn't get to get eight hours of sleep because somebody else's timeline?
If you're getting something in the morning, it's usually an emergency or some higher level.
But not if we're sending emails because that happens to be our time clock of responding to our emails or doing so.
I don't, I don't look at my emails more than more trust.
Well, you're, this is a very, very common workplace issue with regards to where we are in the world right now. It's how to separate life-work balance. This is not specific to Malibu. We can definitely work on maybe a policy where the staff knows, it's not an emergency, you don't have to answer at 1:00 AM. I have staff and they know that, because I went all night and I send them emails, but I say, you don't have to respond. Like, this is just, they, that, there is a, you know, if there's an emergency, I'm gonna guess that people have to wake up in the middle of the night. But that, like, we're all adults. I don't know why it's,
Let me tell you something.
Yeah.
Those emails come in at twelve AM, my, I keep my phone on all twenty-four seven because I am concerned about emergency and I'm concerned about, you know, what's going on with, with the road and who's going to break in somebody's house, all of that. But when I get an email about somebody, it's just random, at twelve AM, it dings in my ear, right next to me, and my husband is like, who the hell is that?
Rightfully so.
I have to tell him.
Rightfully so.
I have to tell him, you know, I'm sorry, you know, it's an email, and he was like, and I will tell you what he said. But, you know, there is a timer that you can put on your emails so that, you know, they go out at seven AM. You know, or they, they, you know, stop going out. Like, if it's, if, if it's just a FYI or something, you're not sending that out, it, you know, it's,
Technology is handy.
How do you flag all the spam? So, I, I have two teenagers, I,
So, so that's a different discussion.
I wasn't, well, no, because the thing is, is if, when I keep my phone on all night, I can't, it's just dinging all night long, no matter what it is. So, I, there is technology now, which maybe we should look into. What? Yeah, on how, this is like,
But, but let's, let's stay focused on one thing.
Our phone's a mess, it's not necessarily spam, because, you know, there's two phones. My personal phone, I turn this off. This is the city phone, it stays on twenty-four seven.
There, there is technology that we probably don't have that allows you to select what can come through and what can't come through and allows the sender to, to determine whether something's an emergency or not.
Sounds like way more technology than I know, right?
I don't know if they're sending anything.
But, but here, here is the point, we're talking, we can't control the residents, right?
Yeah.
Let's, let's do the, uh, the great John Wooden, another great public servant. Nineteen ten to two thousand ten, right? That's an amazing wisdom. Let's not focus on the things we have control over. He said, don't let the things you cannot do interfere with the things you can do. What can we do? Can we say we will not email city leadership after, you know, a certain time of the day? Are you comfortable with that boundary? Saying, hey, we're not gonna email them after eight PM?
I don't think anybody after eight PM.
I'm asleep by eight thirty.
I'm not setting.
I'm sleeping.
Look, phone call, eight thirty, that's,
I try to by nine thirty asleep.
Um, so, we're talking about contact, not just email. Texting, phone calls, emails, right? Um, whatever else is out there, technology-wise. Eight PM, can we just say, hey, let's hold on to that until tomorrow? Or set it to go out at seven AM, something like that, right? So that we are not part of the thing that keeps them awake or obsesses the spouse or anything else. Uh, can we commit to that? Mary Ann, you good with that one? Doug, you're on board? And then the weekends. This one's a little harder because things happen on the weekend. But can we say we will only text or email or call if it is a pressing or urgent matter, an emergency? You know, a resident calling us and telling us they saw Bengal tiger on their hillside, right? Things like that, and are we comfortable with that weekend boundary as well? Bruce, you comfortable with that one?
Sure.
I don't know, I didn't feel like a firm commitment to me, right there on that one. But we'll take it, I'll take it nonetheless, because I love you, man.
I learned a long time ago to go by the words and not by the, uh,
The tone, whatever else.
But I think your non-verbal cues, you scrolling on your phone while he's talking directly to you.
I was scrolling on my phone to see how often I had communicated with certain people at certain hours.
I'm fine with that. That wasn't me calling you out on that one.
But some people do feel that you are not fully engaged when you are multitasking.
And in my paradigm, that's their problem.
Uh, we'll talk about that privately, you and I, right? About the impact non-verbal communication has on messaging and how it can undo our verbal, right? In, in, in those situations. So, um, there, those are nice boundaries to have in these situations. So, not after eight PM, does somebody write that down? Richard, did you get that down?
Wait, is this policy?
No, we're making commitments, that's all.
Okay.
We're not establishing or adopting a policy.
Wasn't your parents like vote on it?
It's, it's not agendized for, for vote or anything else. Yeah, 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 no.
But that being said, should it be something that maybe we update the code of conduct? That that is included as a,
That, that's up to you.
Okay.
I think we need to get the technology. They just introduce these things out and then it's not a commitment, I think about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, if, if we don't see a commitment to it, then we should have a discussion about adopting it formally. Right now, it's a commitment from this government. Stephen, I like your answer. I don't email anybody after eight PM. That's a good one, Steve, that's perfect, right? Alright, so there's that part of it, right? The weekend limitation, the after eight PM. We won't talk about the morning because I understand Candace is up at four AM every morning anyway. Five, well, I was close, I was close. High achievers, right? They're, they're always starting the day early. So, so there's one element right there. Now, let's talk about when it comes to our, just in general, not after hours, because we're committed to after hours, not, not communicating, right? But what about our interactions, emails, FYI emails to staff? Do we feel like we need any limitations or boundaries on those?
Why isn't that be directed by the, the management, the staff that says, look, here's what I want you to do, right? I mean, if I go, if somebody tells you, you got, if somebody has a request, this is gonna take you an hour to fill out, talk to us before you fill it out. Talk to your supervisor, right? I mean, doesn't that have certain controls, some of this stuff?
Before, before we get to Haylen.
Yeah.
Um, should we, I mean, I mean, that's, that's one person talking, right? Out of our governance team. That, should this be going the other way and us educating managers? I doubt it's anyone frontline, non-supervised who we're contacting, is it?
Well, I agree, I just wanna get a clarifying question with that. Because I agree, I think what I do is I try to CC these, you guys, the executive team. And then you guys can determine if it's worth the staff's time or anything like that. I also don't understand this, this is very open-ended, there's no quotient, right? There's no idea of a number. Like, I would like to hear a staff tell us, ten is too many, five is just right, two,
That was our next talking point.
Okay, great. So, I don't know if I can answer your question until I get more feedback from that.
On whether we should be, um, have limitations on, on reaching out to staff?
I think having their feedback to us, because we're the ones that you're questioning because obviously we've done something wrong or incorrect.
I don't know that it's something wrong, we're just looking at best practices here to create this culture.
Let's hear from that side to hear,
So, the first question, uh, do we feel like, as, you know, the executive staff of the employees here, that we can effectively educate them to, um, not necessarily jump at the beck and call of council members and, and jump into work? Because are some employees with their paradigm gonna be in the way? If, if, if Doug reaches out to me, I'm doing it.
They're gonna do it.
But then we CC the, you guys, and there has to be some way,
And then you create work for them to have to say, hey, don't, don't do that.
This is a,
Don't listen to Haylen, right?
Kind of, yeah, this is low-hanging fruit.
I picked up the phone and called and said, that's too much.
That's right, which I appreciate, the budget.
Like, I'm sorry, but, you know, we can't do this stuff, so please don't say it.
That would be awesome if you did more of that, I think.
But then that's taking away from her management of the staff and the goals of the city. If, if she's constantly,
The cumulative effect.
Right.
You're just one council member. And then, and then you got Steve who calls every ten minutes, you know? That is not accurate, I made that up, alright? Uh, and so forth, it's a cumulative effect of each of you generating work for them, right? Doug, you had your hand up.
Well, it goes back to, uh, business email etiquette or anything else. Business email etiquette says, if you're gonna talk to somebody, you're gonna, you copy the laws.
That's right.
And, you know, you let them know what you're doing. And you certainly don't tell anybody what to do without going through the laws. And you certainly, you know, if, if I, you know, I should say, you know, I just wanna let you know about this, you know, in a CC. I know, uh, also about handling, this is kinda, it gets back to what I started with the problem. You know, what etiquette standards do we have for email and phone calls and referrals?
What, what do you mean by that?
Well, um, I know when emails first came out, we started talking about how do we handle this through, because of the quarters, memos and phone calls.
Yeah.
And you'd CC somebody on a paper memo. Well, now you have an email. And now how do you handle that, because it's instantaneous? And you can easily send it to, you know, five hundred people by mistake.
Or intentional.
And, and the etiquette standard, I think, is the problem, we don't seem to have here. The symptom is you get too many emails. Well, what's the etiquette on how you send out emails? And I know when I first got to be a council member, I asked some of the council members, how do we handle these, uh, uh, resident referrals? And think about that in business world, client referrals or customer referrals. And the answer was, make sure you've, uh, are copied, you know, send it over to the appropriate department and make sure you're copied and just ask them to keep you informed. That's it. You don't solve the problem, you pass the problem.
So, you want the structure that drives the behaviors, right?
Yeah, and, and you just talked about one of the etiquette rules, and that is we don't do after eight o'clock.
Yeah.
Uh, so this kinda gets into what is the common etiquette that we'd like to see, the staff would like to see. And I know if I was the city manager, I would want to have my board of directors, council members, you know, tell my staff what to do, I wanna know what's going on, so.
Intentionally or inadvertently?
That's right.
Right?
I guess it gets down to the etiquette question or rules of the road. And that's what I'd like to see is,
So, before you jump in, Steve, I will say, now, this is me sharing an anecdotal experience, projecting my paradigm a bit for one end of the spectrum, right? As a former appointed and then elected official, um, I can't think of a single time, my point of contact was a superintendent and an assistant superintendent. There were six school site administrators in a very active, you know, district of parents who were very helicopter hovering kind of thing, right? And always cared about their children, I love that. But in those four years, right, uh, before I, I, I left that, I can't remember a single time ever emailing a school site administrator, even though I had people chirping in my ear about, hey, over here at such and such location, uh, they're talking about eliminating, you know, the, the gifted and talented education program and moving it over to this other middle school and blah, 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 blah. And there was pressing to these folks and the group of folks that this person represented, right? But I never once felt compelled, right, to, to email the administrator or the other people involved with that, other than a superintendent. That was an etiquette that I was shown, a structure that I was shown, and that's how it worked. Now, these are not Malibu residents, I'm talking about who I was representing. I know this is a different beast. But we can still have a structure that includes, if we are going to reach out, it's to these folks right here or whomever will follow. That can be our etiquette. And then the question of volume, going back to Haylen's point. What is too much? As a new person learning the ropes, you probably email, I'm guessing, three times as many as the rest of the folks around you. That's a guess, right? Because you're new, right? And, and that can be, and you're involved and active, all those things. So, what is enough, what's too much? Bruce?
Okay, it's, I said, this is extremely valuable to me. And, and I hope that, that my responses that I provide are not taken to suggest that I dismiss any of this because I'm listening to it, I'm contemplating it. I feel it's really a shame that if this is an issue that's been going on, that we have to be discussing it for the first time in this setting. Because to me, that's, that's, that's the kind of thing that really ought to just be raised when it, when it occurs. Uh, that's my paradigm. I, I believe in, in, in raising issues when they're, when they need to be raised. But, um, I think this is a nuanced issue, but most things are. The devil's in the details for most things. And, and I, and I don't believe that generic rules are the way to address these issues. I think this is a much more nuanced and, and large issue. But, I mean, I'm, I'm glad we're having this discussion, I truly am. I didn't appreciate that it was an issue in the first place. And it, it troubles me to learn for the first time in the setting, this is an issue.
I can understand that.
And, and it makes me wonder how many other issues are there that I'm not aware of? Not because I'm not self-aware, but because they're not even being asserted. And, and we, we need to be open. I mean, that, we, we've, we've expressed that during our strategic planning sessions. No one here, I, I, I believe, and I, and I know for me, no one here's gonna bite anyone's head off or be aggravated by learning that there's a problem. It's important to, you can't address problems, you know, problems exist.
One of the conditions precedent to, to use that legal term, one of the conditions precedent to us doing that is asking this question, is Marianne approachable? Is Bruce approachable? Doug, Halen, Steve? And if you are, it's a much easier dialogue for us to have. And so you said, it's, it's more of an issue of not knowing rather than self-awareness. I think it's a combination of both, honestly. A little lack of self-awareness and then a lack of forthright communication, right? So I think it's two things together at the same time, both being true.
Is there a perception that any of us are not approachable?
That's the question, and I think you'd have a hard time as elected people asking your people to answer that question. Because you'd have to look at it, you know? They may say, "Oh, Bruce approachable?" And then back it up going, "Yeah, Bruce, you're approachable," right? And you have to, now, let me give you my personal assessment before I go to Halen, then to Steve. And that is that I find you very set in a structured paradigm. But I have always felt in my interactions with you that you reason things out and you're, you're movable. You're not immovable. That's my take with it. But it takes a lot of effort to move you. It does. And, and that's a lot of work over here for the team, right? But you're, you're not irrationally rigid in your paradigm and thinking the rest of the world is wrong if they're out of step with you. That's not you, right? So, there, we all have, we're all in the spectrum of approachability. If someone says, "Hey, is Kelsey approachable?", someone might answer, "Um, well, has she had her coffee yet?" Because, you know, it depends, right? Halen, then Steve.
Oh, yeah. So, I, I agree with, with some of that. I think that this is nuanced. I would like the rules of the road to be able to, like, drive it safely, because I've never been quite told what's an inappropriate number. I do know that I, when I text Trevor on the weekend, I try not to. So I have self-regulation, and I wanna do so bad, and I'm like, "Yeah, totally." And I'm like, "Oh, my God, I can't text this," so then I'll put it in like a to-do, but. So I have been here for five months and I've had minimal, believe it or not, like, interaction with staff. I don't find that there's a relationship to be approachable.
I was told that, like, minimal, minimal, minimal interaction with staff.
I don't mean to step on you, but you and I talked about this. You would love to meet staff. Get in there.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm Halen, and you know, da-da-da-da. But, but that's not.
I wasn't told by you guys.
That's not how it is designed typically.
Right.
Here in Malibu. In other cities, they have that, right?
Well, I would love to.
Sort of meet the council kinda thing, but that may not be, right, what it is here, kinda thing.
That was, that was my idea.
Oh, great.
It was shut down like a.
By who? Oh, I remember.
Like a cannon. I wanted to, I wanted to have each council member go in and talk about leadership.
Let's do it.
And why, why it.
Yeah, let's do it. So the thing is, I think resentment festers.
It got, it got shut down by some other folks, you know, because I was trying to think of.
But you're the boss.
Other than us as representatives, how can we shut down anybody?
Because she reads the room.
I, I, I don't really, really.
Yeah, oh.
And, and, uh, yeah, and so, but I think that really needs to happen.
I agree.
I mean, because it, it, we, there's the us versus them culture, it's just, it's gotta stop.
That's it. And this is to Bruce's point. The longer that we let some of this stuff fester, the more resentment and unhealthy environment will happen. So you coming in every six months when there's a complaint might not be effective. It might be that we have to do more of these sorts of things more often, if you're seeing that there's resentment.
I'd like to rephrase your statement, because I'm very effective.
Oh, no, I know, but like, you have to.
That's, that is, this, this could be more effective and enhancing if we were still doing the other stuff as well, right? Steve, what was your comment?
Two things. One, I'm an adult. And you've got a city manager who's, who is responsible for taking care of the city. If we're doing something wrong, we should hear that.
Just tell us.
Just tell me. I mean, I, I.
That's right, tell them all.
And I, and we listen. I mean, I listen, alright? I mean, we, I try not to do, I do not call people up and tell them what to do. And they come up for a question if I get information I need, but I don't, okay?
Is that allowed?
Yeah, I, it'll be, I mean, you can.
And what's the point of us if we can't ask questions?
And then, and then I wanna.
Until you call.
Then I wanna go back to, to what you said about me. Look, I've been involved in the city stuff for a long time, at least eight years, actually, okay? And I know the staff, okay, and they know me. And if I call them up and say, oh, they say, "Steve, I can't do that," okay? I mean, I've got a communication ability to talk to them, and, and so I'm not, I don't think of overburdening them, and they're not gonna, they're not gonna let me overburden them, alright? If they say, "Tough," the answer's tough, alright? And then you walk away and you say. So I think there, there, this process of getting to know these people, letting them know us, I think can be helpful, because you lose the fear that says, "It's a city council person, geez, I gotta..."
Okay, I, I, I've got a just, I've got a completely different thing on that.
Okay, you can.
I think I've known the staff infinitely better, having been a former staff member, and.
For how long?
I was 17 years old, right before I became a council member. So, there's a lot of new people, so there's a lot of people I don't know now, just because of, of turnover and everything else. And I know there is a completely different relationship that I now have with staff, because I'm a council member. I am now here where I used to be here. And so, when, I, I can't have the same types of interactions and relationships because I went from being one of the group to now being the boss of the group.
Buddy and a boss, yeah.
You know, and so there is a difference, and there is a different way that they interact with me just because of the sheer fact that I'm a council member now.
So you, you would definitely, but it doesn't change the fact that your experience can be your experience, right? That's, what you said could be very accurate. But, I don't know, because I'm not involved, but you could have an accurate view of what you just described. So both of these things can be true. Like I said, two things can be true at the same time that are opposed, right? They can.
But that would be her paradigm because of her history, whereas I don't share that history because I didn't know them as intimately as you have, which I think is very valuable to maybe impart on us, because you've seen both sides of things. But I still think that there's a relationship that doesn't have to be buddy-buddy. Or we call them up like, "Hey, would you have for lunch?", but it just is like, we are approachable, because without that, we have an invisible wall that I feel, I feel.
Well, it goes back to the yes and then the Candace, probably.
Yeah, I would love that.
There's the yes and then wall, that's it. We just don't need that. We also don't need, you know, being in the trenches all the time, right? With, with them, you're not there in the weeds, you shouldn't be in the weeds. Richard and Candace shouldn't be in the weeds, right? They delegate. They leverage themselves to think more strategically and do all that they can. They, they delegate everything they can to, for sure, like. I'm still pulling the weed out of my socks right now.
What are you talking about?
We're, two comments. First of all, we're elected representatives. That's, that's a given.
Yeah.
And, and we got elected because we have certain philosophies of how to govern and how to lead, and the philosophies that we exuded to the residents, vote, they voted for us.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, so, we're, we're doing what we were elected to do.
Here, right?
Right. And we clearly do need to align the management and the staff with, with what we, we need to, I'm having a hard time articulating this, but I mean, if, if they're intimidated or have a problem with our governance method, it's, we need to fix that in some way, but the fix is not necessarily for us to govern differently. Because the way we govern is what we were elected to do. Just like right now, I can't stand.
This is what you were elected to do.
Okay, I cannot stand, and I suspect there's tens of millions of people in this country that cannot stand the way this country's being governed. But that's the way the people decided to elect a person to do it. I think it's atrocious, but that's a minority opinion apparently, okay? So I need to, I need to acclimate myself to the way it is or change the government through the, the democracy, through democracy.
Again, we're not talking about your role as a governance team, right? Because I said at the beginning, you guys are doing fine on these four pillars here that we're talking about. We are talking about the impact thereafter, when you're supposed to, you know, put it in the hands of a great shepherd, a great leader to fulfill your vision. Now, that's, that's the first boundary that happens, right? And, and you let that happen. Overseen, right, their performance and so on, very important.
No, I, I think that my analogy is, is exactly apt. That was what used to be said about the Justice Department. But our president has said, "No, you know what? Legally, Supreme Court's told me, I'm allowed to direct them to do whatever I think is appropriate," which a lot of people are against. But that actually is what he's legally entitled to, and he's doing it, and a lot of people don't like it. They need unfortunately to acclimate themselves to that, because that's the person that was elected, and that person has that power. We, I can speak for me, and I think I speak for Steve and Halen at least. We ran on platforms of, "We're gonna be very responsive to you individual residents, and we're gonna be your representative with the staff of this city."
Did you run it this way, though? "We're gonna be very responsive to you." And if we have to burden the staff to do it?
Yes, yes.
I didn't, but I did do responsive with civility, and hopefully I would understand if there's a disconnect between the way I act, that you would call me out on it, because that would be, you know, which I know with Joe Tony, there was, and I'll just call it out, you know, with the code of conduct, I got a ding and I wanted it in public, but I didn't hire Joe Tony, right? So I came into this with an inherited city manager in a disaster.
No one hired him.
No, but that's where I think, if you're talking from an insurance point of view, "Oh, and they're going through all of these city managers," I think that's a false statement, in my opinion, right? Because we didn't hire him, or, you know, we inherited.
That, that isn't the bigger picture issue, though, when it comes to that. And I didn't wanna speak specifically to this, so I won't.
Okay.
Speak in general, right, hypothetically, and say that this idea that, "Hey, I was voted to do this, and now we're putting parameters on it, Jerry, that are gonna hinder my ability to do what I told the people who voted me in I was going to do." That's not true. We, we're not handcuffing you. We're not handcuffing you in any way. You can still be that person they elected, and, and you would lack character if you, if you ended up, you know, not being that person. But there are limits, right, to doing things if they're having an adverse overall impact on us. And, and it may not be you specific, it could be a little bit of this and that and the other. But we can't just say, "Hey, this is it, and those who aren't comfortable with it, acclimate like I did to the current administration in Washington," right? Doug, and then Steve.
Alright, I think this needs to be said about who voted us in and what their responsibility is. You, none of us, got every citizen in this town that voted for us, who voted for the same reason. Some people voted for us because our name was first on the ballot, and they had no idea what we stood for.
That's my strategy usually, yeah.
And, and others, you know, had a specific agenda they wanted to climb. But I think when we got sworn in, we voted, we were elected by all the people. We were, we were required to represent all the people, not the ones in just a minority that pushes us over 51% or whatever it took. So we have to realize that there, there are people that we're representing and those that were, didn't vote for us, but we still represent them too. And just because we came up with a platform that said, "This and this," has to be balanced with those people who have a different opinion as well. We're representing all the people, not, not the ones that push us over 51%, over 50%. And I think that's one of the things we have to keep in mind, is you're talking about how we, how we address city staff and everybody else. Yeah, we may have, we may have had a practice regarding the push, but it has to be balanced.
Always, right, with fulfilling your, your trust that they've given you. The, the trust that they've given you with all this. Did I cut you short?
No. Yes, I thought, I, I go back to, look, I used to manage a bunch of people, alright?
Yeah.
I had 26 division managers and how many staff. And if somebody was doing something wrong, they could call me up and say, "This guy's busting my chops." And I'd call that person and say, "Stop it." I mean, so I think if we're doing something wrong, I'd like to know about it, and I will do whatever I can, whether it's me or my appointees, to try and fix it. But, I mean, we're sitting here, and, and again, we started out this whole meeting saying, "Are we doing something wrong?" I mean, the fact that we spent a half an hour trying to just figure it out, telling you there's a lack of some communication that we should be in, I just, my one man's opinion.
I think it's healthy to, to have this discussion start, because you all have had various comments on the subject. And understand, this meeting wasn't intended to solve anything, just to enlighten on a couple of points, right, of, of why we are where we are, and to say, "Hey, you know what? There are things that we can always improve on, right, when it comes to our interactions as a governance team with the employees of the city of Malibu, so that we can all keep rowing that boat toward the same objectives, right? Am I rowing the right way there, or should I be rowing this way on that?" So, and just to finish this thought, then I'll go to, to Doug and then Steve, is this. Structure drives behavior, right? System thinking, structure drives behavior. All we've done today is build more structure with the hopes of harvesting the behaviors that are gonna be optimal for everyone. Not just one of you, but all of you as a governance team, and those who are boots on the ground striving to implement your vision for this great city, right? And so that's what we've been trying to do today, build structure to drive behavior. Every system thinker knows, if this, then that. And so that's why we talked about that 8:00 P.M. thing, that no weekend thing. And we, we ended up, we never finished on, you know, our direct communication with employees in the city and the impact that has. Shouldn't we be doing that at all, right? And my time's almost up, so I'm just bringing that up to let you know that, that these are discussions that need to continue for the reasons Steve just said. If there are best practices or negatively impactful practices that we're engaged in, let us know. I'm a full-grown man, right, who can, can be heard along those lines. But understand, in every city that I work with, the city attorney and the city executive team, they're always walking a fine line, a balance line, right? Because they, they serve at your pleasure, right? And that always makes it hard for there to be directness, which is why I have the opportunity to come in and do that. And so just understand, if it doesn't come, don't, don't jump to the judgmental or accusatory side of. Dang it, just talk to us, right? It's not easy conversations to have, right, for my seat. Doug, you had your hand in, then Steve.
All I wanted to say is, this has been very productive, and we may be running out of clock. I think you got more slides. Is there anything that you feel like we gotta cover?
No, 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 no. It's more important to have the dialogue about, you know, our practices, what we're doing, our customs that are impacting us. And I don't think it should end here. I think it should continue in, in other situations where you can have those discussions, talk about, you know, what, what are those additional things? And then how are we going to train our commissioners? That should be a discussion, you know, that you have as well. How are we going to help educate them? It could be directly, if they're people that you saw to get appointed, or it could be in, in a training session, right? Not by me, it could be with our city leadership team who has that, or, or Trevor who does that, you know? Steve and then Halen.
Two points. Hire a city manager. Our job is, look, if we hire a good city manager who we respect, who, who we can talk to, who'll talk back to us, we will not have the issue of not having the communication. If something goes wrong, they will, "Look, I think Candace is a very smart person, and I have no doubt, if, if she calls me up and says, 'You're doing something wrong,' I have no doubt that I'm gonna believe her, and I'm gonna try and fix it." So if I get a city manager that I respect, that we hired, that we think really knows how to do the job and does the well, that will eliminate, it, it will facilitate them of their ability to talk to us and make sure we're staying right on the track, okay? I just.
No, no, that's, that's a valid point. It's a valid point, and in small towns where we attract and retain these city managers, usually we hire experienced assistant city managers or town administrators and give them their first job in a smaller town. Malibu might be the exception because of your marquee state of, of who you are. But the point is, e-every time that city administrator comes along, if they have to keep telling you this stuff, right, and then again, more time, more work, but it is part of their job to help you understand and remain within those boundaries. So Halen, then Marianne.
I go, I go into the fairway, last we talked about training. We do not train our staff. I mean, I've got new people on, on the planning commission. Look, I was on the planning commission. It takes a lot of work. It takes a lot. You gotta understand where to go find stuff. You gotta know what you're supposed to read. You gotta be able to, you know, there, there's the LCP, there's the municipal code, there's the general plan, there's the, the other document, the city planning commission interpretation. We gotta, if they understand that, it makes their, like, it reduces the amount of time we're gonna complain about stuff, right? To me, that, that to me, look, if it's done right, I don't have to do anything. My life becomes easy, and that's what, I think we should be striving to try and make that happen.
Very good. One taken.
And to piggyback on that, we, because I have heard that the commissioners might be part of this issue, but we haven't, we have two new commissioners on planning. That's a huge thing. The city wanted them, right? I listened, they.
Brand-new, Halen, no experience?
No experience.
No experience, none. And so therefore, we also have fire, and we had mudslides, we had PCH closed, we had transition in executive staff. So if we're hearing the commissioners are PIA's or whatever, there's a real reason for that that I think needs to be acknowledged, right? Or, because there hasn't been training. I haven't either. I mean, I went to my city council thing, but I was in the middle, that was five days after the fire, right? So the thing is that we also have to keep in mind, staff is very thin. I hear that quite often. And therefore, it's not just on the council. I don't know how to train my commissioner. So there has to be some sort of, like, also accountability on the staff's side to do some of this. I do believe that it's, maybe the. I do believe that it's, maybe this is a, we recircle for the Strategic Workplace Workshop where there is a culture part of that, but we have to really have transparent discussions with where our shortcomings are. Instead of hearing it five months later, we do need to have some concrete examples of where commissioners are failing, where council is failing, or it just becomes this kind of broad thing that we're not doing our job. And I also want to point out that as council people, we also toe a fine line. I believe that I toe, I'm constantly toeing a very sensitive line between staff, the Brown Act, the residents. And so I appreciate all of this, but I think we do need to have more of it, especially training, because if there is shortcomings, they need to be trained before the staff complains about it. So that's all I have.
Very good. And I'll touch base with our executive team to talk about what resources they have in J P I A. And I know they're willing to, for the benefit of the members, right? Your membership has its benefits, right? That they'd be willing to fund a lot of these things as well.
Yeah, I honestly, thank you for bringing it up, because I think a lot of these concerns will go away as we bring more people on and that bring on the capacity to handle the absolutely non-horrible, because you actually are understaffed and we have more work, particularly through this recovery with everyone, and we're just understaffed. And I think that that's why, you know, we're hearing this, but we're working very hard to fill those vacancies and, you know, whoever sits in this seat after me, that's going to be a real focus. And you know, we're so much of this. It's just that so many people are having to do so much more alone. And that, and that's where it's like, hey, I just, you know, I don't have the capacity to handle this much more of, say, F Y I. or this and that and others. So it's just keep that cognizant until we're able to fill those vacancies. The other thing, structure is really important. I just, you know, I've learned things every day. It would be really helpful to have a resource guide on our websites, you know, that says, because I got an email about somebody's trash bin yesterday. You know, if you need a garbage trash bin, call this person if you're in this part of the neighborhood, or call this person. Or, you know, if it has, if, a guide for like service providers and also service delivery. And I think that that's something that would be really helpful, not only just for all the residents, but also for you to be able to say, hey, go to here. You're going to see this, like, because there's no such thing, it's just like when I walked through the door, I got handed a binder and figure it out. And so, you know, it's, it's good to have all the resources in place. I think it'll reduce a lot of this email stuff.
Yeah, definitely going to alleviate the pressure on you in many ways if we do.
Okay, I have two things. One, you know, I think also whoever does get hired as a city manager, there has to be a universal acceptance of their capabilities. I think what's happened in the past is that there isn't respect for that person who has been hired in that role, regardless of, you know, whatever. That person had got elected, or that person got appointed by a group of individuals for a certain skill set. So there has to be a respect of that position, period. To, with regards to resources and everything, the website is filled with information. People don't want to go and take that step themselves.
I suppose you could solidify it.
Well, there's a couple of different things. There's also, we have a resident base that oftentimes has somebody to do that for them. So for them to take that action, that's outside their paradigm.
Their paradigm, yeah.
Because the website does have a vast amount of information. Could it be organized in a better way? Yeah.
Just a nice little cheat sheet, right?
This is a cheat sheet. That's awesome.
So Bruce, and then Haylen.
So, so first of all, when I, when I responded before sure about the emails, the, what I was saying non-verbally was, I don't agree with this, but I'll abide by it. So sure means yes, I will abide by it. I think though, that if we've got a council that likes to be more communicative and do so in any time they want to, we should be focusing on that when we're hiring a city, when we're hiring a city manager. You know, we don't need to necessarily adapt to what someone else wants. We can make sure that we hire the people that work the way we want. That was my experience professionally for thirty plus, for thirty to forty years. In fact, I went to a place that had a very traditional background and we changed it completely. We shook it up and made it much more nimble and much more responsive to our clients. When you have a difficult client, you don't make them have to be a better client, you respond to the difficult client by having the staff that can handle that. I think we need a different staff. And Steve and I, four years ago, ran on a proposition that we needed some type of different people. And we're actually getting them.
So, so I don't, were you done? I don't want to cut you.
Yeah, I'm done.
So I hear what you're saying. There are certain things in the world though, that while not going to be embraced by everybody or believed by everybody or internalized to their paradigm, carry a great deal of truth. For example, I've never seen this statement written anywhere. A great leader is a micromanager. I don't think I'll ever see that written, right? With the hundreds of municipalities that I have as clients, I have never seen somebody embrace the idea that, you know, we want a city manager and administrator who we can have access to twenty-four, seven, whenever we want, for whatever we need, you know, and can call them in the middle of the night, which is my optimal speaking time between one and three in the morning. I want to hire the person that's available to me then, right? I don't know that there is a person that you are going to find who has the experience that you're looking for, we talked about this, who has the knowledge base, the subject matter expertise of municipal government and administration, that is also going to take this job with the caveat, hey, we want to be able to access you all the time. I just don't ever, I've never seen that person. So more power to you, but I'm not sure even if you find them, that that is the best practice. That's just one paradigm to another, right, on that.
So I would love, I love the idea of a chart for all the agencies that govern, at least for me.
You like the cheat sheet kind of thing?
Yeah, because I have spent the last five months trying to figure out beaches and harbors, county, M R C As, Santa Monica Mountains.